February 13, 2023. I just want to tell you upfront that we will not be having a meeting next week on the 21st, and we will resume on February 27. I also want to acknowledge we lost a former council member, Jean Carpenter. I think her first name was really Ava. And she was a very powerful council member here, I think in the 80s. And I think Conrad, didn't you serve with her?
I was on the council.
Turn your mic off.
Yeah, I knew her quite well, yes.
Will I say something?
I was on the transposing commission when she was on the council.
Okay.
When I got on the council, she retired from the council then. But she's lived in Bellevue for a number of years after that, in our neighborhood in Somerset, until about maybe a dozen years ago when she moved.
I hear she was a community activist and a real strong advocate for affordable housing. So she has a wonderful write-up in the paper, if you want to look at that up. Yes?
Yeah, I had a contact with her too. I worked with her when I was the legislative director for Washington State PTA, and she was the executive director. We worked for a long time on education issues and things. I saw her just about a year and a half ago when she was really getting sick. But she was an amazing person.
Oh, that's...
Yeah.
She'll be very missed.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to do the roll, clerk?
Thank you. Mayor Robinson, excuse me.
I am here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Lee, can you lead us in the flag salute?
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
So we have a commendation or proclamation actually tonight. Day of Action and Remembrance for Japanese-American Incarceration during World War II proclamation. And I've asked Councilmember Robertson to read this, and we have Kyle Kenoshta here, who will accept it afterwards, and I'll let you speak if you'd like to, and then we can do a picture. Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas February 19 marks the anniversary of President Franklin Delano Roosevelt signing Executive Order 9066 in 1942, which authorized the United States government to create military exclusion areas, frequently referred to as internment camps, for Japanese-Americans living on the West Coast. And whereas more than 120,000 Japanese-Americans, including American citizens and those born in the country, were forcibly relocated from their homes to camps in remote inland parts of the continent. And whereas among those incarcerated were more than 300 women, men, and children of Japanese ancestry who called Bellevue home at that time. Whereas the well-documented cost was heavy, both emotionally and financially, with many Japanese-Americans losing their homes, businesses, property, and savings. And whereas Bellevue lost a generation of Japanese-American residents when only 11 of the 60 families returned to the area after 1945. And whereas the United States government formally apologized for the internment policy in 1988 when President Ronald Reagan signed the Civil Liberties Act, offering survivors $20,000 in compensation. And whereas the city of Bellevue honors and recognizes the tremendous value and contributions of our Japanese-American community, and is committed to inclusion, access, equity, and opportunity for all. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Lynn Robinson, or on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, I do hereby proclaim February 19, 2023, as Day of Action and Remembrance for Japanese-American Incarceration during World War II, and urge the residents of Bellevue to reflect on this unfortunate time in our nation's history. The city further reaffirms its commitment to protecting the civil rights of everyone in our community. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue.
Thank you. And Mr. Kenoshta, you are president of the Seattle Chapter of the Japanese-American Citizens League? Great, come on up.
Sure. So, good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, City Manager Miyake, and members of the Bellevue City Council. My name is Dr. Kyle Kenoshta. I'm co-president of the Seattle Japanese-American Citizens League, or JSL. And on behalf of the Seattle JSL and our local Japanese-American community, I wanted to express a brief appreciation for the city council resolution and observance of assigning of Executive Order 9066 in 1942. Executive Order 9066 led to some very dark days for 120,000 West Coast residents of Japanese ancestry, of which 300 were members of the Bellevue community. In approving the resolution, the council recognizes the tremendous damage, loss, and trauma caused to the families experiencing incarceration, who not only had made a life in Bellevue, but who had made many contributions to the community. In 1984, a congressional committee charged with examining this injustice found that the causes of this tragic event were first the racism of those who abdicated for it and made the decisions initiating it, and then the lack of political will of others who could have stood up against the wartime hysteria after the Pearl Harbor attack. These should be lessons for us as we confront the injustices of today. The resolution also acknowledged how our community worked together to achieve a measure of justice in 1988 with the achievement of redress for incarceration. This is significant to the Seattle JSL, which as a chapter stood in the forefront of the effort, and personally important to the memory of my own mother, Cherry Kenoshta, who is recognized by former Governor Mike Lowry as the driving horse behind redress. Like her, we should not rest until justice in society is attained. The Seattle JSL is also commemorating the anniversary of Executive Order 9066 by designating the Saturday as Day of Remembrance and Resistance, with first an 11:00 a.m. event at the Washington State Fairgrounds to remember the place where 7,000 local Japanese-Americans were first incarcerated solely because of their race, and then a 1:00 p.m. event at the Tacoma Northwest Detention Center, where we're creating awareness of the hundreds today who have been incarcerated solely because of their immigration status. To conclude, we join with the Bellevue City Council in committing to inclusion, access, equity, opportunity, and the protection of civil rights for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kenoshta. All right, let's go down and get our picture. Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda amendment to remove item 8J from the consent calendar and place the item under other ordinances, resolutions, and motions, which should be taken up directly following the consent calendar.
Second.
And that is something that Councilmember Lee asked to have pulled, seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are speakers pre-registered this evening for oral communications. And before I start calling names, I'll remind the public that oral communications is for a period of no longer than 30 minutes. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak, and only three people will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. In addition, this is an election year for the city council, and I will mention that in compliance with Washington State Public Disclosure laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no election-related topics may be discussed during oral communications. This includes discussion of ballot measures, endorsement of candidates or political parties, and speaking on behalf of a campaign, including your own. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature may forfeit their time during oral communications. With that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Wendy Tyner. And Ms. Tyner is joining us virtually.
Ms. Tyner, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me via Zoom. I hope you can see my expression and my excitement and my enthusiasm for this year. And I'm not a fan of Zoom, but of course it does work under these circumstances. So anyway, I'm Wendy Tyner, and I'm one of the organizers for Wintergrass Music Festival. We're just 10 days away and held at the Hyatt Regency, and now for the first time, we'll be at the Weston Hotel. We expanded the festival in order to allow for more Bellevue residents to have greater options to attend a single show rather than a full day or multiple days. The highlights this year include multi-instrumentalist Tommy Emanuel, Dan Tominsky, who was the singing voice for George Clooney in the movie Oh Brother, Where Art Thou?, and other bands that support our theme, torch and twang, our efforts to support bands coming from Louisiana. Now although Wintergrass has historically been very fiscally conservative in our decision-making, expanding into the Westin was definitely a think outside the box move. This is our way to invite more Bellevue residents to attend. There will be a variety of single shows each night at the Weston on February 23, 24, and 25. Needless to say, we invite you to also come to the Hyatt for more than one show, but with busy schedules, that may work for those who can't, who've never attended the Wintergrass before. We suspect if they attend one show, they'll come back for more. So bluegrass in Bellevue, what a fun alliteration. I'm such a fan of alliterations. We're celebrating our 14th year in Bellevue and our 30th as a festival. This year was exceptionally a memorable year for us. Visit Bellevue awarded Wintergrass the Event of the Year Award, and you presented us with a certificate of commendation. Thank you. These acknowledgements inspire us to be more creative in everything we do. We're most thankful to you right now for the recent EAPs Grant Award, or the EAPS Award. The funds are used to improve our education programs, offer scholarships to students, allow for children 12 and under to attend for free, and to keep ticket prices affordable for seniors and those in the military. So please stop by for free. Anyone can walk around the Hyatt, the Weston, and Lincoln Square to visit the exhibitors, watch the impromptu jam sessions, participate in the jam sessions, and even catch a pop-up band playing in the main area. You can go to wintergrass.com. So back to the alliteration, bluegrass in beautiful buildings in Bellevue. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I want to speak something about something what is I call dory, dory crooks. And I give a little bit example what does this mean to me and to you too. Almost two months ago, I go speak in Bellevue School Board Meeting. And when I start speaking, after five seconds, three idiot come to me, three men idiot come to me, pick up me, and try to take me out, mentally sick people. No problem. It's not first time in my life what is I touch idiot. It's too many idiots around. So I make to complain to board, discriminatory complaint. It's very interesting because discriminatory complaint post to be investigated in answer too. Nothing happened. They refuse give me answer. It's not only refuse, they give me trespassing. Trespass, he told me I'm support Nazi. I'm Nazi supporter. You understand what this mean? So to me, this look like they are pure crooks, liar in everything. To me, it's look like a dory Nazi pig and don't give answer for two discriminatory complaint. It's not surprise me because I complained to Bellevue City for 30 years, doesn't time, never have answer. For example, 30 years ago, I speak with Council Conrad Lee and ask him for something, and for 30 years, he never give me answer. It's a classic example. Guys, and I spoke right now to you, lady, a mayor, you know what this mean? Accept this like my complaint to you. We don't have something in Bellevue what is can recognize discriminatory complaint, what is ignore in this situation, Seattle School Board or supervisor, you know what this mean? If we have a human commission, you know what this mean? And I spoke to them few times in talk. In Seattle, we have Human Rights Commission, what is accept every complaint, you know what this mean, what has happened in city? We don't have here. And Human Rights Commission is a pure freaking idiota, you know what this mean? And I ask him why you don't accept complaint? So right now, I speak to you, to everybody, and to Mayor exactly, doing something, you know what this mean? Because we don't have this in Bellevue. Is this very important? Stand up, America. Clean your chamber from idiota. Thank you very much.
The next speaker on the list is Sally Lawrence.
Yes, it here, this very good.
Very good, thanks. Hi, I'm Sally Lawrence. I've spoken to you before. Thank you for allowing more commentary. I'm again speaking about the ISOLA development project that's proposed for Lakemont Boulevard. The organization that I'm chair of is called Save Coal Creek, and we had a really fabulous rally last Saturday at Newcastle Beach Park in Bellevue. Over 120 people came, and they came from all over Bellevue. Some of them started at Redtown Trailhead hiking, some walked on the city streets with signs, a few kayaked, and a couple biked to Newcastle Beach Park. And I want to thank especially the Parks Department, which a day before, we thought we were going to have a lot of people, so we asked that they open up an extra parking area. And normally, they don't do that till Memorial Day, but they opened up the parking spaces for us, so we had plenty of parking. And it was sunny, people really enjoyed themselves. So that was successful. But it was a protest march. We are concerned that the ISOLA development process is moving forward very quickly to a March 2 public hearing. So we had 120 people there, and our gathering was to raise awareness and make people aware that this could change the open space that most folks who hike or take walks down at Redtown Trailhead will be very much affected by this. And right now, there's very little time for city and county governments to work together. We think this is a really urgent matter. It's a prime time to try to open up a conversation with ISOLA and to offer funds that are available in county and city. They've been set aside through our parks levies. So this is a really important time for these conversations to start. And really, this is a win-win situation. We're not taking anything away from the developer. The developer will be properly, adequately compensated, and it'll be a win for the city. This city is known for its parks, and this particular location, the reason we've been very insistent on looking at it is because it's kind of the jewel in the crown. It's right between a county park and a city park, and it has the capability to help keep improving Coal Creek and its salmon and preserve the open recreation that we've been enjoying for so many years. So at the rally, we had folks fill out postcards. Here's 112 postcards to all of you at city council. I'm going to give these to city clerk, and these are from the heart. I think you'll enjoy reading them. And again, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Joe Kunsler, and Mr. Kunsler is joining us virtually. Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hold on one second. Okay, there you go. You can begin now.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Bellevue City Council. Joe Kunsler here. I raise a deep concern over your public comment policy. It appears that your mayor believes, and I hope this is my misperception, that it is her solemn duty to sacrifice her beliefs to allow one Alex Zimmerman to campaign in hate. I want to begin by thanking profusely your deputy mayor and councilmember Robinson for turning your backs on Alex Zimmerman tonight. You are showing moral and physical courage against a modern-day Nazi. That said, whenever I hear Sieg Heil and such, I hear a call for genocide for the disabled, the LGBTQ community, and yes, Jews again. I thought we believed in Never Again. But every time your mayor appeases Alex Zimmerman, it's like the 1930s all over again. Then we experience January 6 and February 24. What conclusions are to be drawn? I believe Mr. Zimmerman is using the city council as a base of operations for his campaign of hate. If this council and mayor cannot enforce the state law prohibiting campaigning during public comment, I will take this matter before the Public Disclosure Commission for the continued aid and comfort that is provided. I ask you, make an honest lady of your mayor, and please copy the Sound Transit Board Public Comment rules and use them. Stand up for your community as your resident and one of my heroes. And Claudia Badassucci is at the Puget Sound Board and the Puget Sound Regional Council. Sorry for the misspeak. To quote Zelensky to you, "The main act of courage is endurance of bringing one works to the end in spite of everything. The truth illuminates our path. We know her. We protect her. Our truth is a struggle for freedom. Freedom comes at a high price, but slavery is even higher," end quote. I know at least two of you understand this. We're not going to let Mr. Zimmerman run around and spew his hate anymore, I hope. And I think it's time for it to stop. And finally, in the amount of time I have left, I want to ask the city council not just to get tough against Mr. Zimmerman, but to know that as a Claudia Badassucci superfan, that I am lobbying hard to get to your white rail, at least a starter line by Christmas of this year, because I'm so appreciative of her and what she does. And I hope you will stand up against Alex Zimmerman, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you for your public service.
Thank you. The next and final speaker on our pre-registered list is Mary Kay Cuthill.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what the name was.
Mary Kay Cuthill.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to come tonight. I'm Mary Kay Cuthill, and I'm here representing a group of ladies and parents, neighbors, and community members of the city of Bellevue, excuse me. And I just wanted to ask all of you guys, you know, how many of you have been on a team before? I think we've all...
We can't do back and forth with you, so we just have to patiently listen to your rhetorical question.
That's fine. I wasn't really expecting an answer. It was just more of a rhetorical question. And I asked the question merely because I think we all have been part of a team at one point or another, whether it's, you know, a sports team, a community team, a dance team, but most importantly, a work team. We're all part of a team together, and we do that in efforts to be united and be successful. I think a lot of us maybe watched the Super Bowl yesterday, and on the back of that, we saw some successful, amazing two teams that have worked obviously really well together, from the coaches to the players to the staff. You know, that's what makes a team successful. So what does successful team look like? It looks just like that. It looks like the hard-working efforts that are united, they're following the rules, they're dedicated, there's not one person that's standing out, they're all working together. And unfortunately, we do see those teams that are not successful, and those teams are the ones that are broken, and they're not following the rules together. They have a tendency to just be rogue in what they're doing, and they're not following along and being united together. And so some of those teams can also be, look like cities. Those cities can be unsuccessful as well, and we see that. We're seeing that all across our country, and it's very sad and it's disheartening. And as a team of the city of Bellevue, we're part of your team. We're here. We're your neighbors, we're your friends, we are community members, and most importantly, we're your taxpayers. And we know as your leaders, you're our leaders, you're part of our team, and we all need to be united together to fight the crime, to fight the criminals, and to fight the lawlessness that is happening every single minute of our day now. I mean, I don't come here, I come here speaking for a lot of people who are not here but feel the same way. We're at dinner parties, we're at neighborhood sporting events, and we all talk about how sad it is to see some of these cities that are losing their communities, they're losing this feeling of being safe, and our cities are shutting down and closing storefronts, they're closing homes, they're moving out of the cities, they're leaving our schools. And we're seeing that far too often. So I hope that we can be successful and be together as a team.
Thank you. That is the end of our pre-registered list. At this point, I would ask if there's anyone else in council chambers joining us this evening who would like to speak to the council or online? If so, please raise your hand. No hands, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Yes?
The Mr. Kunsler's, I appreciated everything he said, but I wanted, I think that you're being treated a little bit unfairly, and I wanted to come to the defense of the mayor and the council because no one up here agrees with what Mr. Zimmerman says. We all think he's ridiculous, we all think that he's hateful, but if we have open public comment, we have to let people comment. I personally turn my back, but if we all walked out of the room, the meeting would stop. So we have to sit up here and take it and say nothing. And I know that Mayor Robinson doesn't like it any more than anyone else listening or sitting up here, whether their chair is turned or not. But that's America. We have the right, if we have an open public comment, people have the right to come and speak, even if we don't like it. So I appreciated Mr. Kunsler coming and giving his, using his right to free speech to condemn the hateful, terrible comments that we endure week after week. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say that Mr. Kunsler sent an email that's going to be responded to by our clerk and our attorney that talks about that in detail. If there's anybody in the community who wants to know the details of free speech and what we can tolerate or not, you can ask us for an explanation, we'd be happy to provide it for you. And thank you for your comments. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So city clerk, there's a little confusion here because you had directed that we would take up item 8J after the consent calendar, but then you also said it would be in other ordinances, resolutions, and motions, which is at the back end of our meeting. Yep, we're reordering. So the motion to amend was to reorder other ordinances to fall at this exact point on your... So we're moving that item 12 to here? Yes. And now we're going to take that up? Okay, perfect. So Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce item 8J?
Item, excuse me. Item 8J is a resolution authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with the Performing Arts Center at the East Side, also known as PACE, to provide event management services for our Bellwether Arts Festival for initial two-year term, with options of three and one-year renewals, a maximum of five, and for a total contract amount not to exceed of $600,000. And so we have staff here to respond to any questions that the council may have with respect to item 8J.
So Councilmember Lee, you were the one who asked to pull this, and I'm sure you are well-versed from having read the packet, so fire away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the council and to raise this and pull it out of the consent calendar. This is a topic we are all familiar with, we will support. It's about Bellwether Art Program. It's an artwork and creative event that can be an expression of our strong, diverse community, and also can further our history and all that. So we will support it, no question about it. We discuss extensively. The question I have is in the contracting process itself. This is, you know, I mean, a significant amount of money, $600,000. And when I look at the information that's provided in the packet, you know, as of this weekend, I have a number of questions in my mind, so I just want, I don't want to just cut right to it. I had the staff from the community, you know, department, talk to me this morning, and I asked a number of questions, and I was not, I believe, you know, given the information I needed, as a result, this is the time for me to bring them up, and so I appreciate you answering them. And as we know, it's not a question... And as we know, it's not a question of your staff work. I mean, you, I've served the council for 30 years. I don't think you ever heard me say one word bad about, negative about staff. We probably have the best staff in the country.
It's okay, Councilmember Lee, we know that. Go ahead and ask your questions.
I'll just go with that, okay? But it's a question of how we need to, I do, as a decision maker, give you the proper direction, information, guidance, so that, you know, which, then you are safe to do what you have to do. My question is, unless I missed something, you know, that's difficult. I may, so just bear with me. But my question is, what process? I don't see it in your report that you went through. You talked to three prospect contractors or people, East Hub, Bellevue Art Museum, and Pace. That's what I was told.
No, I'm sorry. It was an open RFP process. Those were some of the contractors who are in our public purchase system who did see the call, but they were not, we didn't get bids from each individual contractor. It was an open RFP, if people could choose to apply or not.
I was, I asked for RFP to look at. I don't see RFP. So maybe you can direct me to where the RFP is.
We can follow up and give you the RFP.
Okay. It's not presented, so I asked for it this morning. I didn't get it. So I'm asking again. And I know that the decision was made with having a negotiated agreement with Pace. So I asked about, you know, what Pace has done, the qualifications, and how does it fit into RFP requirement? And number one, two is, I didn't see a work plan, work scope, as to what will be done for $600,000 for two years, understandably. First year is 300, and then the other 300 the second year. That's fine.
The scope of work is included in the contract.
I looked through the contract, but it's very general, very big. They need, yeah, so. I, I can went through the whole thing, but I just felt that it's got information. I don't know how other council members felt, but I do.
I'll tell you, Councilmember Lee.
I prefer, I.
You're kind of talking about how they're doing their job. That's not our job.
No, 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 no. I am looking for substance. I'm not getting substance.
We didn't ask you to make that decision that they've made. We're asking us to approve the decision that they made with their experience.
What decision have they made besides, or what in the contract?
They're recommending we award this contract.
What are they going to do? I'd like to know what they're going to do. Usually when you give an RFP, you describe the work.
Right.
Right? And then?
He pulled it, he can, he can ask his questions, but I'd like you to just get to your questions.
Well, I'm just asking.
So you've asked two or three of them, and go ahead.
I need to have a conversation.
We'll have a chance.
Yeah, so, again, what has Pace, what is experience related to the work plan you have in mind? I'm not even saying what it is, because I don't know what it is. So they said, well, they participated a year ago, last year. So how does participation qualify for their?
Maybe we can ask what qualifications they had that, that made you want to choose them.
Just relate to what you're thinking about.
Yeah, so the.
As the plan to do the work this year.
So the question qualifications is an excellent one. Pace, as many people know, is an organization that has for, for many years been looking to build a large performing arts center in Bellevue. And I think that's how many people know them. Additionally, they also do programming on an ongoing basis within our community. So some of their major programs are Arts Without Barriers. This is an ongoing live performance at multiple locations throughout the East Side. Just in last year, in 2022, they performed, they had, they drew audiences of over 63,000 to these performances, and they did that on a budget of about 80 grand. They also have an event called, I'm, oh, sorry, I lost my place in my notes here. They have an event called Pace Presents, which has served over 81,000 people during the months of April through December of 2022. So they are accustomed to large event production with large audiences. Our Bellwether contract is looking for at least 50,000 engagement and a slightly larger budget, which would allow for more marketing. Because I do think that there is a key point that maybe more robust marketing, so more folks were aware of the programming arm is needed.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. Well, my, what? You mentioned what they've done is Arts Without Barriers and Pace Presents. What, what kind of program are those?
You know what, Councilmember Lee, I'm going to ask you to take this offline if you want to get the details, but you've been given a very good answer as to why they chose that group.
I was.
And I'm going to give other council members a chance to speak.
But you're asking me a question, so I, let me ask it.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off here for a minute. Is anybody else who would like to say something? Councilmembers on?
Yeah, you know, I do, because I, I just want to point out to my fellow council members that on page nine of, of the attachments in the council library, the actual professional service agreement is in there, and on page nine, attachment A1 includes the full scope of work of what we're actually getting. And I'm quite excited that on page 12, sorry, page, yes, page 12, item four, talks about sponsorship. And I'm actually very pleased with the staff about the fact that there's a commitment here that Pace shall meet a minimum of $150,000 by the end of 2024 of sponsorships. So we are not actually funding Bellwether on our own, and the expectation from the consultant is that they're actually going to bring in at minimum the 150,000 of sponsorship. And that's really what public-private partnerships are all about, that we are quite proud of. So I, I want to lift that up because I think that's an important element that now that we're having an opportunity to have this item in front of us, to thank you for that.
I appreciate that.
I don't have any other questions.
Could not have said it better. Councilmember, Councilmember Stokes, did you want to say something to what's?
Yes, please, thank you.
For discussion?
Yeah, as the liaison for the Arts Commission, this is a process that has gone, we've done this for years and years and years. It's the same process, the same thing with the Human Services Commission. And all of the information is accessible to council members at any time. They're, we, they're operating under a budget that we passed with general guidance on the activities. It's always been available. Council, Arts Commission meetings are open. And to you, to the public, it's thoroughly discussed. We have an Arts Commission with other boards and commissions to do this, work on the details and to go through it and meet the guidelines that the council has set broadly. And that has happened. Arts Commission, or the Arts staff has done a tremendous job on this. I've worked with them on, with the Bellwether as well for some time now, and this is a big step forward, and I'm very confident that this organization will do a good job. And we have steps along the way to make sure they comply with the contract. And this is a normal process.
So you sound like you're in support of this item.
Yeah, I'm just saying that this is a normal process. If we took every grant we have in this, in the city with the same piece, we'd be here forever.
Okay.
And we would be managing it instead of being the policy directors.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Lee having some, some concerns and pulling it as any of us can, right? When we have a question or we have concerns. So I appreciate the fact that, that he did that. Hopefully, the questions that he's looking for are getting answered. I reread, and I was satisfied with the process, the scope, et cetera, with, with Pace. I'm sure there is, Lori, some kind of clause in there. I didn't see it right away, but I was just going to ask you just to verify, because I'm sure Councilmember Lee would be curious too. If we're unsatisfied with their performance within the first year, that we can, we can move the contract somewhere else, or you're nodding your head, so that's appropriate. So I'm fine with it. Thank you so much. Appreciate your hard work.
And I'll just say that I, because Councilmember Lee brought my attention to this, I read it more carefully, and I was really very excited for it, actually. I think it's going to be great, so I'm very supportive of it as well. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of item 8J? Oh, do I need to make a motion? Yeah, sorry. You go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution 10227, authorizing execution of professional services agreement for Performing Arts Center East Side Pace to provide event management services for the Bellwether Arts Festival.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. Abstention from Councilmember Lee. All right, we're moving on to our public hearing. And thank you, staff, for being here for that. Mr. Miyake.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We have a public hearing this, tonight. It's on a proposed resolution releasing a water easement. And just by way of background, this particular easement was declared surplus by the council at your January 23rd meeting. Tonight, we have, joining us is Lauren Matlick, Rural Property Manager, with a brief staff presentation. Once the public hearing concludes, we would be seeking council action on the proposed resolution in your packet this evening. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Lauren.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Our staff report is on a request to release a water easement located at 14121 Northeast 20th Street. Tonight's public hearing is to allow the public an opportunity to comment on this The property is located near the intersection of 140th Avenue Northeast and Northeast 20th Street, adjacent to Highland Park and is approximately 10 blocks east of the future 130th Avenue Northeast Light Rail Station. It's being developed as an approximately 350,000 square foot apartment building with 397 units, of which 20% will be affordable through the multifamily tax exemption program at 80% area median income. The developers requested this easement released during their permit process. The existing utility improvements within the easement shown blue will be removed by the developer, so the easement will no longer be needed. New water service will be provided from the facilities within the new public right-of-way, so no new utility easements will be required for this project. Following the public hearing, staff requests council action on the proposed resolution authorizing the release of this easement. This ends our staff report. We will be available to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City clerk, do we have anybody signed up for comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There is one speaker pre-registered this evening. And before I call his name, I'll let the council know that we did not receive any written comments on this particular item. And our speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you, sir. You will sit here. I sit next to you. It's enough room for everybody.
Absolutely.
For smart people, there's more room. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Zihai, Maydori, Demnazi Gestapo Democracy, map and psychopath. My name, Alex Zimmerman. 10 seconds for clear situation. Joe Kingsley, mentally sick man, he born with brain damage. He terrorized me for many year and all way from killing.
Mr. Zimmerman, you need to speak to the public hearing. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. I very appreciate. This unique situation, he are real born with disability, yeah. So about water, I don't know what does this mean in this situation, but water have too many different point. It's a regular water, mineral water, spring water, it's a Pepsi, a Sprite. I don't know what is water here, but everything what is I told, you have a discount for poor senior citizen and disabled in store. Corporation doing this. Are you doing this? No. You never doing for water, electricity. I talking about this for many year. Seattle have 50 percentage for all low income. He talk about low income. When you start talking about this, you saw electricity, you know, charge money and go up every day.
So we're talking about a water easement?
Yes, a water.
And I don't hear you, I don't hear you addressing the water easement.
Water, discount for water, discount for electricity, discount for senior citizen, disabled, low income.
I'm not sure you understand what a water easement is.
Exactly. Water is discount need too. This exactly what's happening. He talk about low income. He talk about low income. So you have discount, you have 50 percentage like Seattle, cut for everything. It's a package. You cannot do in something in one way, in something in another way. It's not possible. You have low income, you have disabled, you have low income people, you have senior citizen, you know what it mean? You post a 50 percentage like Seattle doing for everything.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to cut you off because you're not addressing the water easement.
No, this water in poor, in poor location. He told about 100.
No, I don't think you understand actually the topic here.
No problem. I don't understand, I not post to be understand, I'm not professional like he or you. On my opinion about water straight, we have situation with water, and water come to electricity, this package. You cannot deliver water without electricity. It's not possible. I don't know about this, but it's not possible. So I demand what you start doing like old civilized people doing. Bellevue much rich city in America, billionaires, a millionaire location. You can give discount for senior citizen, disabled, low income, water and electricity is a package. Don't give me, so I am stupid. I spent the university 20 years. Thank you very much for your correction.
This is the last speaker on our pre-registered list. At this point, I would ask if there's anyone else in council chambers who would like to make a comment specifically related to this public hearing? Or anyone online? Please raise your hand. Mayor, I do have one hand online.
Okay. Hopefully, they're going off of what our staff said.
Joe Councillor is. Mr. Councillor, can you hear me? Thank you. Okay, your time begins now.
Allow Sound Transit to continue its vital work connecting the region, and that's my understanding of this easement. If it's wrong, I apologize. I'm not going to get, have a back and forth between me and Mr. Zimmerman. I appreciate this mayor attempting to enforce the rules, but I think he should be banned for a period of time. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. There is one additional hand online, and that individual only has a first name registered. Patrick? Patrick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
This is the first council meeting I'm attending, thanks to your Zoom facilities. My, a brief introduction. My name is Patrick Satinmorden. I have been a resident of Bellevue since 2006, when I moved here to work for Microsoft. And I have a pressing issue on my mind, a question more, which is, why don't the Bellevue Police Department have body cameras?
Mr., sir, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. This is more of a public comment topic, which is at the beginning of our meeting, and we would love to have you speak at the beginning of our next meeting. And our city clerk can let you know exactly how to do this. Right now, we are doing a public hearing on a water easement.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I.
That's okay. It's, it's not easy to follow on Zoom.
Yeah, and also I know there is a pre-registration thing. Next time I shall do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That is the end of our raised hands, I believe. I don't see any additional hands, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Lauren, just in 30 seconds or less, explain again what we're doing here, because I just want to make sure we all know.
Get back on there. Yes, so there's a redevelopment of an apartment building where they have an existing water easement under the footprint of the building. They will be redeveloping the site, removing the existing facilities, and placing the new service in a public right-of-way. So this, this easement is no longer needed. There will be no need for future easements either.
Thank you.
Yep.
So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is pretty straightforward in my book. Any comments or questions? Okay, may I have a motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 10228, authorizing the execution of documents necessary to release an existing water easement at 14121 Northeast 20th Street, which has been declared surplus to the city's needs, no longer required for providing continued water service and granting and recording of such release being deemed to the best interests of the public.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. We will move on to our next study session item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. You have two topics on your study session agenda this evening, and the first one topic this evening is an informational update on the Belred Arts District. And just by way of quick background, this, the last update you received was around this time last year, and since then, the staff has been doing quite a bit of work on a number of efforts to move the Belred Arts District forward. So joining us this evening to update the council are Jesse Kanador, Chief Economic Development Officer, as well as Lori Hoffman, Arts Community Manager, both from the Community Development Department. Again, this is an informational update. No direction or action is required by the council this evening. Over that, I'll hand it over to you, Jesse.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. We're very much looking forward to tonight's update on our work to accelerate the work on the Belred Arts District. As the council may remember, the work around the Arts District really started to come together when we started talking about updating the economic development plan in 2019 and diversifying the economy, working on the creative side of the house, improving cultural tourism, and improving access to arts and culture for our residents were front and center when we started talking about the Arts District. Of course, the pandemic came in 2020, so we couldn't quite do as much as we wanted, but starting in 2021, and since Lori joined us last year, we have really been accelerating the work around the Arts District and has never felt quite as real as it does today. There is an image that you're going to see tonight of an upcoming art piece that I think really summarizes how I feel we're getting into the Arts District tonight. I think you'll know it when you see it. So we really hit the ground running in 2021, and Lori is going to talk to you in detail about all the great things that are going on.
All right, thank you all so much for having us tonight. I have the pleasure of coming to council fairly frequently, and I cannot underline for you enough how much this is the item I want to talk to you about. So tonight's information, our presentation is information, and we're looking forward to any feedback or notes that you have for us. Our agenda will be fairly short in terms of items, but hopefully diving into them all a little bit more deeply. We're going to start with some background on the Arts District, take a look at an implementation plan that we had drafted in 2022, and then looking at an art market study from Artspace Inc. that we just got a final version on before we take a look at our next steps. So to get into some background, Belred currently, our Belred neighborhood, has the highest concentration of arts and cultural businesses and organizations and artists in Bellevue by a large margin. We call this a naturally occurring creative cluster. This is the common term when we're talking about arts districts out there. Nothing made this happen. Nobody stood out there and said, we're going to have artists come here. There was a naturally occurring set of circumstances that drew artists, particularly that there was space and that was relatively inexpensive. And then once a few artists come in, they gather their others around them. In recognition of that, the city first designated Belred our Arts and Culture District in the 2009 Sub-Area Plan, and then we did further research, and you see it further in policy in our 2020 Economic Development Plan, as Jesse stated. Now, in Bellevue, we like our data, and we have spent a lot of time studying what makes an art district tick, what makes this neighborhood special. You can see here on the screen in front of you, several studies that we have participated in. These are only a few, there are even more. This is the true epitome of data-driven and passion-propelled. Not only are we dotting our i's and crossing our t's and making sure we're doing it right, the people in the Arts District are fiercely passionate about this place, that they're home. You see in front of you here, this Stranger cover. I was handed this, I think it's like from 2018, and I was handed physical copies of this Stranger article multiple times from people in the neighborhood. They're like, this, let's do this. The sheer excitement coming off of them was palpable. So let's take all those studies, and let's do the next step, because this, this is a community at a crossroads. There are many current creative businesses, artists, and organizations worried about the rising cost and costs to live here and the loss of existing spaces. Although the leadership of the district will come from the community, it's vital that the city partner in the district's development, leveraging city skills and actions where needed. There is a lot of development coming to Belred. This is the reality, and that is both an opportunity and it's a challenge, and it's one that we are absolutely equal to. So taking all that knowledge, all that study, in 2022, we received a final copy of a Belred Arts District Implementation Pen. It was included in your packet tonight, and this administrative plan is how we get from here to there, hopefully in five years. So I'm going to take the rest of tonight's presentation, kind of looking in the framework of this implementation plan. It lays out four focus areas for Arts District growth: management, visibility, connection, and creative space. Looking across Arts Districts across the nation, we are not the first ones to do this, this is, we're not unique, so there's a lot of study, there's a lot of comparative to look at. These four things are absolutely vital for Arts District growth and success. So let's get to making these four things. Management. The goal of our management focus area is for the district to have an active and formal managing body. That can look like a lot of different things. The Rhino Arts District in Denver, for example, has four organizations that help manage it. They have a 501(c)(3), a 501(c)(6), a Business Improvement District, and a General Improvement District. All four of those are distinct organizations, and they work together to make that Arts District thrive. Right now, we are working with our community members and our creative business partners to hopefully set up a 501(c)(3), maybe a (c)(6) that is tentatively called, I've been calling them the Arts District Association, and you'll see that language throughout the report and the presentation tonight, although I believe they are looking to now call themselves the Belred Arts District Community Alliance. And that organization is working to set up their final formation paperwork within this quarter. So that'll give us a legal entity, a partner, much like the Downtown Bellevue Association, that we can work together with to do visualization, to do activation, to do a host of events or initiatives. Some things are appropriate for the city, some things are much easier for a community partner. They've been doing tremendous work, even as like a proto-organization. You can see here their logo on the screen in front of you. They also have a completed charter, and they're hoping to launch their website by the end of this month. And that's a place where you'll be able to find maps, lists of creative businesses, lists of events that you can participate, and ways for the community to get further involved. The next focus area we're going to take a look at is visibility. So there's, I think there's, if you drive through Belred, folks will say, if I tell people there's an Arts District there, people generally call me a liar, because if you drive through, you don't see it. You don't see that visualization, the beautification that you associate with an Arts District, and we're going to start really getting to work on that. On the screen in front of you, see one of our box wraps that we launched in 2020, and we're also very excited for the Belred bonus in our arts grants that you approved earlier last year. We have five organizations who received that bonus grant, and we're bringing activities to Belred this summer. We're also going to briefly touch on tonight updates on public art projects being installed along Spring Boulevard, and we're working with our folks, our partners in transportation on street banners, and we'll work with our creative businesses on window signage. We also have the Belred Pilot Program, which I want to give you a quick preview of tonight. So this is a wall. It's very beige. It's between 132nd and 134th on Spring Boulevard on the north side of the street. It's a very standard wall. On the other side of it has that texture pattern you're very familiar with in Bellevue. And this is an artist's sketch of what we hope to put on this wall this summer. So this is a mural that plays with themes of transportation. As you drive, or as you go west on the Sound Transit train along Spring Boulevard, these trepidatious little snells are going to try to go with you. They're going to be shooting down, there's a little bit of a decline, or the street goes down there a little, and they're going to launch right into the sky trying to keep up. We're very excited for this. It's a really nice piece of work by Will Schlow, and we're hoping to bring these murals online in spring, this spring or summer. Then on 130th and Spring Boulevard, we have this wonderful work by Po Shu Wang. You've seen this piece before. We are working with transportation to coordinate our installation schedule so that we have a little bit of economy there. We don't have to take out the concrete once we put the concrete in. We're hoping to see this installed late this year, early next. And then this piece, which is called Rooted by Jill Ann Holt, was originally going to be on 121st Avenue in Spring, there by the Spring District. There ended up being some complications there with the pedestrian pathway, the bike pathway, street lights. There ended up being too much going on right there in that mixing zone, so we went ahead and relocated the piece a little bit more westward. This is going to be at 12th Street and Spring Boulevard, where there's going to be a connection to the East Rail Trail. So this will be heavily utilized, be a nice bit of wayfinding, of really, this piece speaks to nature, a nice way to get into our trail system. Connection. The third area that we'll talk about as a focus is connection. We need more than individuals, we need more than siloed folks working independently. We need to work together as a community. We've been doing several things, both the Arts District Association as a whole, staff here at the city. I've personally been doing what I call the Belred Road Show, which has been just getting folks up to date, a presentation similar to this to about 60 organizations, getting folks caught up where we've been and where we're going, and getting them excited about the Arts District. We've also done creative business, or creative business door-knocking. So this summer, we went and literally knocked on the doors of our neighbors and said, hi, we're here. Here are all the business services that we have as a city for any business. Also, at the time, there were several grants open for creative businesses from the state that we wanted to make sure that folks in Bellevue knew, and we could pull those state dollars into our community. And I cannot underline enough that getting these four things, management, visibility, connection, creative space, it is, it is a one-city, one-community effort. We need all these partners working together to get this done, and I've been very heartened in the amount of excitement and the amount of will-do, will-can-do that I've heard from the community. It's a good place to be. And then finally, the, maybe trickiest and hardest of the focus areas is creative space. The arts need space to flourish. We need space to make, we need space to gather and to present. The community needs space to gather, to share ideas, to just have that third place. You have home, you have work, you need that third place in your community. So as we work on the Arts District, of course, we'll talk about boundaries and borders, we'll work with our comp planning team to get that in with the Belred Look Forward, make sure those things align. We're also going to talk with our developing community, our developer community, to make sure that they are aware, advocate for creative spaces. But where we own land, or where we have control, what more can we do? I'm also really proud to announce that there have been three new creative businesses that have come to Belred who have found space and who have made physical investment in our community. The Yanru Art Center is a 5,000-square-foot art facility, art, kind of what we'd call a white wall gallery in the Belred Arts District. It's a beautiful place where the community can gather. She's very, the owner is very open to community-based shows. This is her second location. Her first is in Taipei, and is very excited that her second is in the Belred Arts District. We also have Eastside Pottery opened, a 24-hour pottery studio for adults. If you want to take a pottery class, you can do so in the Arts District right now. And on the screen in front of you, you see a photo from the current construction of Theater 33. If you're familiar, Theater 33 is a Russian-language theater here in Bellevue, and they're very excited to open this new facility within the next, hopefully, couple months. Construction always takes longer than you think. It's going to have a really lovely wet bar in the front, go in in about a 50-seat intimate theater. So what's next? We have these venues opening, but what more can we do? An Arts District needs anchors. It needs more than small spaces, it needs major facilities. We have Pacific Northwest Ballet. And what else? So we've spent the last year working with Artspace Consulting to look at what affordable artist housing and creative commercial space would look like in Belred. So to give you some background, in 2017, building off of strategies in the draft Affordable Housing Strategy, and as a means to leverage the economic and placemaking potential of the arts, Bellevue contracted with Artspace to conduct a feasibility study on the potential for affordable artist housing and arts facility somewhere in the district. The results of that preliminary feasibility study are available on the city's website. And in 2021, staff began conversations with Artspace about the next step and their need to deliver affordable artist housing and commercial space. In 2022, working with a core group of community members, Artspace launched the Art Market Study to assess the market needs and community demand. The study consisted of two main parts, an arts, sorry, it consisted of an artist survey and then focus groups for arts organizations and creative businesses. The survey collection from artists was very, very strong. We were hoping for about 300 to 400 survey results, and we got 437, and then the, the response in that was a high need for creative space. It was actually a little different than we had thought. We thought housing would come out on top. The shared creative space coming up as the highest need was a little bit of a surprise, but it tells us where our community is. They want a place to gather. Surveys were completed by a broadly diverse group of folks, and we are really excited to see the range in artistic media as well. The study recommendations are fairly rough, they're in your packet, but just some high-level ones, they really recommend a mix of affordable housing with the majority at or below 60% AMI. They are recommending that we prioritize the free shared spaces that residents, for resident support, including exhibitions, teaching, and small performance. Education and teaching came out very strongly in our survey responses. A lot of our artists make their money as doing workshops and teaching, so they might make, but then they also teach in their community. And then we saw the need for up to 74 private studios, which was a surprise. This is not studios as in a studio apartment, this is a working studio in addition and separate to living space. And then, of course, the high need for shared specialized creative, and that could be a wide range of things, but the things that came up the most were drawing studios, workshop space, galleries, rehearsal spaces, and artisanal light industrial. That'd be things like pottery. Our next steps are, we're going to continue to encourage creative economic and cultural growth in the Arts District. We are looking forward to digesting the art market study even more, and then going into, maybe taking a look at specific properties, what a fit study might look like, really get down to some of that work. And of course, we will continue working with the Arts, Belred Arts District Association as they formalize and get started on their work this summer and into the fall, and then we're very, very much looking forward to bringing some of that visualization like we saw earlier. All right, that was our presentation tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be, I'd be very happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. That was great. Councilmember Stokes is liaison to the Arts Commission. Would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is, this is really very exciting. It's been a long time coming. We've talked about in Belred for probably going back before Bellevue Brewing set its place up, and we had a space in there, and we've talked about all these issues, and it's one of these things that it takes time for momentum, and we're at a space where now we're really getting things done, and it's building on a history of need for this, and fortunately, the artists have not abandoned the district, so they're on time, which is good. But one of the things about this too is, when we go on BDA trips or other trips around to look at other cities, this is one of the main things people look at and one of the things we come back from, amazing, you know, facilities like this, and we can do this and we can do that as well as anybody else, we just haven't had the time, we haven't gotten there yet, we're here now. You know, the train is actually going on this one. And the exciting thing about it is, as Lori said, in terms of the art that's already going out there, and combining that with East Rail, combining that with the other parts of the city that are connected, and with the growth in Wilberton and the growth in Belred, and that's, that's going to be a fantastic district, and it's meeting all the needs. We needed housing for, for the artists, we needed space for them, and we needed encouragement and, and opening up in the community. Actually, it's one of these things where the community is bringing this to us now, and they're the ones who are driving this, because people want to do this, and we can do it, and we have the capability. And particularly, I do want to give great kudos to both Lori and Jesse for doing this. This whole concept of going and understanding about the economic, you know, arts as it's affecting the economy is great, but the biggest thing for us is the arts and the effect on people and human beings and how much we enjoy this place. It's making Bellevue, it's one of the parts that really makes Bellevue a diverse, active, wonderful city and with a great arts, and we will have great arts in Bellevue. So I'm really excited about this. And the, the, the piece that you showed, the big statue there, is really connecting something else that has come along, has made this very vital and very, I think accelerated, is the East Rail piece with the arts part on that. We just had a conversation with, with them about this at the Arts Commission, and we are, it's all about getting the arts and getting, that identify the city but do things in conjunction with the rest of the region around us, and we're going to have a tremendous trail that not only meets people's ride, you know, biking and hiking and everything else, but seeing art, seeing culture, and seeing parts of Bellevue, and we're making it so that people will come here, and it's going to really be fantastic. So I'm just excited, because we've been working on this a long time, and we're going So I'm just excited because we've been working on this a long time, and we're gonna get this done. And thank you very much for, for the whole staff and, and for the community.
Great. Thank you. Let's go to you, Councilmember Robertson.
No, I agree with Councilmember Stokes. I think this is really wonderful. Great presentation, by the way. You know, I was thinking when I was listening to you, when I was Chair of the Planning Commission in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, and we did the Bell Red Plan, we talked, I don't remember who came up with it, but we put an arts district in the plan, and then the council adopted it. And we were definitely thinking about Pacific Northwest Ballet, but also wanting to see some of that repurposed use. So I think it's, it's really exciting. And I definitely think that when we do the Bell Red Look Forward, this should be a focus, including potentially adding incentives for art space and seeing the things we want to do. Because when you walk in an arts district and you can go into galleries and you can see this and see that, it's a really vibrant, really wonderful thing to do. And to have something like that in Bellevue would be just dynamite. So I agree with everything Councilmember Stokes said, and I won't belabor it, but really exciting, great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn.
Yes, thank you. This is so exciting. You know, I was thinking the time is now, and I love the fact- The fact that you talk about passion propelled and that it's about the implementation plan. So I was poring over the plan, and there's so many pieces in there about yearly actions to hold ourselves accountable for all of the things that we're gonna do, finding partners, mural. I love all of that. So I haven't, I'm sure that it's all in there, but the idea of pop-ups, temporary art, art in the streets, street dance, maybe collaborative art that community can do together. And then, you know, economic development and tourism as part of this too, I can see. So I did have a couple of questions, and you can answer now or for later. But those new businesses that you were talking about, do we help them with advertising and marketing, recognizing, you know, how tight artist budgets sometimes are? Because I think that would help. On the visibility, I love the murals. I was trying to understand, it talks about the Bell Red Art District Association chartering and logo. And then in our plan, we also talk about logo. So are we saying that ultimately there is one logo? So that was a little bit unclear, so I wanted to get clarity on that. And then on the next steps in them, in the report, it talks about priority of must, should, and optional. I wanted to understand, the optional don't seem very optional to me. So is, is it labeled optional only because we are doing, if we have time, we're gonna do it in the earlier years? So maybe that description, it would be helpful to see. The boundary options, I'm curious, I'm really intrigued by A and B. I, I would think we would want to be as inclusive as possible. So I wanted to get an understanding of how we would actually make that decision. And then lastly, I've thought a lot about, and maybe it starts in this art district, you know, kind of a X percent for art when we're doing any public works type of projects that are public-facing. And it sure seems like if we're gonna be doing construction and building something, incorporating some percent of that budget for arts would be really neat. I mean, utility wraps is, is one small piece, but it sure seems as though a lot more could be done. So I'm gonna stop there. You can see that I'm really excited and lots of ideas that are emerging and just excited that the time is now. So if any of those questions you can answer now, great. If not, we can take it up later.
I think I can make a stab at many of them. So for the new businesses, for the advertising and marketing, I know that's one of the things that the Arts District Association, the nonprofit group, is excited for. When their website gets up and running, they're really envisioning a business directory, but that that can be more than, that there'd be a concentrated marketing effort around if there's events going on in the business, if there's things to do, hey, twenty-four-hour pottery, or Eastside Pottery is open for new enrollment right now, those types of things. So that's certainly a place to start. As for the logo, right now, that is something that the city has, has paid for. That's currently a city asset. It might be a conversation as that association emerges and as they form, if there's a MOU for use, if there's something like that. But currently, that is a city arts district logo. The must, should, optional, I kind of agree with you. I see none of this as optional. But I think some of it is a, how much time do we have and where should we prioritize? So I think the musts, shoulds, and optionals can be seen as, as a priority ranking. But our, our hope being that we would really get done what, all we could get done. For the boundaries, I think that that conversation has actually really progressed since the implementation plan was drafted. As we continue to talk with the folks in our planning team and we talk with the folks in the comp plan and the Look Forward, we think that maybe boundaries are more appropriate in that process. While we talk about a lot of our other boundaries, do they overlap with the business district? Are the, the commercial zone, do they overlap with the zoning? There's a couple of options there, and I don't think we're quite ready. I think the implementation plan might be a little aggressive in saying, here are some options. I think we might need to take some more time and look at what's the best way to approach boundaries and where are they going to be effective and what does it mean? As a nonprofit, the Arts District Association can say, oh, all of Bell Red, we're gonna, marketing the whole district. But where are we gonna focus for codes and FAR if we're having those conversations? So I think that's a little to be determined. As for a percent for the arts, we don't currently have a percent for the arts program. An arts district can certainly be a place where we try things out. It's, it's one of the joys of an arts or an innovation district is you can, you can take it as a, a trial area.
Hopefully, we can look at something like that. I would love to have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barksdale.
Nightlife. Love it. Yes. You knew it was coming. I'm excited about that. So just a few things. One, I appreciate the interactive art. We've talked about it in the past as one of the ways of bringing community together. So hopefully, more of that is on the way. And it also, I think, helps people in a, in a region where people may be less inclined to span boundaries, to like connect with people they, they don't know and they, you know, don't come to a place, you know, together with. And maybe it will help with spanning those boundaries, so excited about that. One thing that I think would also be really helpful, we talk a lot about festivals in the plan. I've been trying to advocate for festival streets. So basically, the, just for awareness, streets that are already sort of configured from a permitting and so forth standpoint, like typically with the special events, right, we have to figure out all the details from all the different departments. And so this would be a known area that getting set up for an, an event or a festival or what have, market or whatever things that you mentioned, there would be a lower barrier so we could have more of those and decrease the overhead for organizations. And then curious about how we tie together the, I know you mentioned cross-pollination for artists and the community. But I'm curious if there is any coordination of tying together the city to point to the Arts District. So like, you know, it's, it's wayfinding in a sense, but it's, uh, sometimes when you go to cities in, in the south, you might see like a city pass, right? And so like, are there ways that we're tying different spaces together as part of maybe like a, some version of a city pass that points them to the Arts District, if you will, from downtown, from Victoria, from wherever you are? So it's just a question. Thank you.
That's a good question. I think I'm gonna do those in reverse order. So as for tying the city together in a way to point to the district, I think this is one of those things where I'm, I'm lucky that I get to do both arts and culture and tourism because I have a fairly good relationship with our Visit Bellevue folks. And they are very aware of the Arts District. It is in the destination development plan. And they are also working on a lot of curated experiences where they would pull together experiences and then, and advocate for those with our visitors. And I know that the Arts District is heavily on their radar for that. Once that light rail opens, the reality is that Bell Red is about three minutes from here. It's very quick. This will be very easy for our guests, our visitors, and our hotels to get into our Arts District. So we really look a lot of our Arts District initiatives towards the light rail open date, whenever that may be. As for the festivals and event streets, absolutely, we, I, I personally very much agree with you. It's one of those conversations with our planning department. I think that having a place, whether it's a street or a parking lot or some designated areas where we know we can set up events quickly, that helps, that helps new things get started. Not all events are from organizations that have a yearly cycle and can plan eighteen months out. Sometimes as we are encouraging new events to start and new organizations to form, they need shorter time spans. So having some designated areas is great.
If I can just add on to that, we're gonna be doing a pilot project along those lines in Old Bellevue later this year to help identify what are some of those streets that are easier for us to help close or temporarily block some things without disrupting the entire neighborhood. So we're gonna take that pilot program later this year and hopefully be able to expand that to Bell Red shortly after.
Agreed. And then as for nightlife, yes. Every conversation we have around the Arts District is about nightlife, about walking on that street and what is that experience like? Having bars, having places to gather, having a place to get a drink, to meet your friends, whether it's a coffee shop or wherever you can get a show. I will point you to, if you haven't been there yet, Mox in Bell Red has great nightlife right now. You can go there and get some incredible cobblers, and there are folks there till late in the night in community playing games with each other. It is one of the most happening parts of nightlife, or nightlife in our community. And there's a secret speakeasy that you get into through a library, like bookshelf.
I'm with you on that. Love that space. The Arts District in the future, so. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. This is very exciting. You're giving me a second shot at what I was talking about earlier, about the downtown, you know, the bell weather art program. And as I mentioned, this is great. Every city needs to have these kind of activities to keep the economic development activities going. And they're talking about how do we recover from, you know, pandemic. Seattle and Seven, so they're all talking about it. They're talking about art and, you know, culture, because that's what can bring people back. And I think we are very fortunate in Bellevue. We, we didn't go through that kind of disaster. We did very much impact it because we've done a good job, the economic development, so we were very well positioned. Now we're already seeing the recovery, you know. We, we're not even dial straight as the other city have. And, but it's exciting. It's, you, you guys are wonderful. As I told you before, we have staff. You can come up with great ideas. And even the previous project we talked about, you guys did it all, you know. But now you're passing on to a consultant to work on it. I'd rather trust you to, to do it than we don't know for sure. But anyway, this is another story. But the point is, this is like a, a candy store where all the kids are going in there. It's all good. I love them all. I like to have Bourbon Street. I like to, like New Orleans. I like to have Nashville. I like Tennessee. I like to, Elvis Presley's great mention here. This is all good stuff. But my concern is it's all competing with each other. Downtown is doing what it's doing. Now Bell Recorder is doing what it's doing. Eventually, they will have to be, I think. We need to have whatever that's necessary to bring people together. But we just seem to be just going everywhere. We have limited resources like you are thinking about it. We have to have people that can do it. Ultimately, the goal is to bring people together. When you have seventy-six studios, I don't want people to be all separated by itself. I don't want to be people who just do Russian ballet, not doing anything with the international ballet, not with the Bolsho Ballet. It's all, they cannot be separate because the people in Bellevue wants to be all together. So I think this is all very exciting.
Can I rephrase that as a question? Because I think you bring up a really good point.
Yeah, the question is, what are we doing to address this? I would, I, I can ask you all kind of questions. How can we have Al Hood Bourbon Street to bring to Bellevue? Bellevue's good. Do it. But I, I'm not gonna ask you because I don't think we should go there. I don't think that that's possible. It's possible, but it's gonna take a lot of resources.
I think the question he's asking that's really intriguing is how do you manage competing art forms and competing performers?
Well, a lot of people are interested. I'm interested. But the point I want to emphasize is we are talking about cross-cultural activity, to bring people together, sharing the same thing. I don't want people to be competing with each other. We are the highbrow. We are the lowbrow. I'm the jazz. I'm the, we have multicultural as well. We're not talking about just, we are traditional culture. Who's providing these programs? That's my question. We talk about diverse multicultural.
We heard the question. Let's stop, let's stop here and get an answer.
So I think that, to the question of like competing priorities, one of the joys of a, of a space that can be really multipurpose is that it can serve a lot of folks. If you build a large room with a sprung floor, you can have a workshop in there, you can have dance rehearsals in there. It's just being very aware of your space and what can go in there. Making sure you have it, have some sound dampening allows you to have more shows and concerts. I also think that we are seeing in the Art Market Study a need for that collaborative space. So some types of art, if you're a painter, you can kind of paint wherever. You can paint in your room. You can paint in a small studio. But if you're a printmaker, if you do lithography, you need a giant stone press. And individuals don't tend to own those. They're usually in studios. One of the things we saw in our Arts Market Study was a lot of dance organizations. Bellevue has an extremely high number of dance organizations. So that might be a place where we choose to look at more because there's simply such a need for it. And then I think maybe to your other point towards the cross-cultural, I think that that is the joy of an Arts District, that it does draw people into it. And that as long as we continue to talk with our folks in our DEI department and Dr. Whitehead and their work with the Cross-Cultural Center, maybe there are places as we both move forward for collaboration.
Great. Those are good questions, Councilmember Lee.
Good question. Yeah, thank you. Good questions. But I just felt that this is a big task. I like the enthusiasm, like the creativity. I like the whole idea. But this has got to be implemented in the right way. We can let this all be going to a candy store. We want to pick everything up. And we're gonna be, I don't know what's gonna happen. So we are gonna be here. The people live in Bellevue for the next fifty, hundred years. And we can experience those things you're talking about. And the way we do it now is, I'm, I'm gonna go to New Orleans if I want to meet, see. And I wanna go to Nashville if I wanna go see Old Prayer House, whatever, you know. But have all put in the Bellevue? It's all here. We're all gonna live with it? I mean, that's, that's not-
That's why we're not in charge of it. We put people who can-
But I'm gonna be here-
Let's move on to Deputy Mayor.
Okay, okay. So this one.
Okay.
So we're community, community partnership members. I don't know who are the community partnership. You survey four hundred and ninety people. Do they include all the different cultures, different programs? They all know that they have a share of it? They have a spacing? They can do it? You're gonna have a, so I could not imagine.
How are we addressing the cross-cultural needs of the community through the arts?
So the cross-cultural needs of the community are one of the things that we looked at a bit in the study. I will point out to Councilmember Lee's point, the four hundred and thirty-seven respondents to the survey are individuals. They're not necessarily organizations. And you can see in that study report their breakdown on demographics. It was a fairly diverse group of folks in a lot of categories. And it's also very clear in the report that the exact individuals surveyed are fairly unlikely to be the exact individuals served. They are sampling of our current arts and culture community, but that will change. Any development that might happen would be years down the road. So it is a sample in time, and it's usually valid for about five years. Does that helps?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
One more question.
You know what? I'm gonna stop you here.
Okay.
I'm gonna let the Deputy Mayor go on, and you can take that last question offline. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori and Jesse. Great presentation. I'm not gonna belabor all the great points, maybe of my colleagues so far, but I as well am very excited about it. I just want to give you a couple, a couple of things for, for thought and a couple of questions. So actually, what I think Councilmember Lee was, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think part of what he's trying to say is make this a unique Bellevue experience. Yes, we can take inspiration from Bourbon Street or Nashville or whatever, but, you know, we, we want an experience that's uniquely Bellevue as well, and that's gonna work for our city and our residents and our artists, et cetera. So, and I, you know, I would, I would second that definitely. And, and that got me to one of my questions here about how are we encouraging this great mix of, of music and, and dance and technology, et cetera, versus the, you know, the district getting a little bit too heavy in, in, in one area? Or maybe that's not a bad thing if it did. I don't, I don't know. Maybe that would actually work itself out. But it, it seems like we're trying to have that nice equitable mix of those, of different types of, of art. So that was one of my questions. And then on the, kind of on the, the size of the, of the area and the boundaries, appreciate your comments on that, what was in the packet, but really believe that, and I think you, you mentioned it, Lori, that too many of our residents don't know when they are in the Arts District still. So as, as much as we want to keep pushing this and grow faster and faster and make this a real tourism, I think we need to first make sure that people who live in Bellevue know where it is. So I think, you know, I think signage, obviously, once those boundaries are determined, I think you've got some great examples here. I mean, when you start seeing these murals and start seeing some of these art installations, hopefully, people will recognize, oh, this is a little bit different. I must be in the Arts District now. So, so that's really great. And then, and then really also think, really need like a, and I'm sure this has been talked about or discussed before, but some kind of signature event to really bring people there at least- but some kind of signature event to really bring people there at least one time of year. And then hopefully they go back multiple times to go back and revisit different artists or bars or whatever it might be. But just really feel like we need to educate and activate the space locally before thinking regionally. So I'm sure these are all things that you've already thought about, but it's just some of the things I was thinking about while listening to all the comments and your responses as well. So I'll stop there.
I think you're absolutely right about a signature event. And I think we are kind of taking a little time to percolate and see how the community and the district forms to what that signature event would be. Right now, the Arts District Association Group has been kind of talking about a large welcoming event, like a welcome to the Arts District grand show in conjunction with the light rail opening. We might be the only people who are excited that the light rail has been delayed because it gives us more time. But that is, that's where we're focusing a lot of these, especially the visualization efforts, is kind of timing it up with that so that when our audience arrives on that train, they can see the Arts District. But I think that signature event will evolve. Smaller things are coming out right now. We are working with the Black Love Market to bring a black artist artisan market into the Arts District, hopefully at least once a year, hopefully twice. And that could become something larger. It could really grow. Is that the signature event? Maybe. Maybe it's something entirely different. We're going to keep working and see what comes out. There's a new nonprofit in our community called Arts Ma who has done a pop-up event in Faktoria Mall. And they are planning a large, like an art walk, but a curated experience in the Arts District this summer. And they are hoping that will become an annual event as well. So there's several things kind of percolating up. We'll see which can really bloom out. And I think what I'm hearing from you is a major event though, like our Fourth of July or something like that. It might take some time to develop.
It could also be a couple of separate events. I mean, for example, we had our first ever New Year's market pop-up event. What a great area maybe to try it there as well. So. But yes, but a signature event ultimately would be, would be great. Thank you.
So I have two comments and two questions. I think it's great that you're capitalizing on this naturally occurring creative cluster. I think it's great that you already have anchors. Most cities that want to create something like this don't have either of those two things. So that's an amazing start. I would love to contemplate microhousing as we're working on land use that will allow microhousing. I'd love to contemplate that with shared art spaces. And with MFTE, a developer could bring those prices way down on a micro housing. So I love that idea. And then, you know, I used to take ballet at the San Francisco Ballet and it was in this old warehouse with all these skylights in this. It was so cool. It was all hard, old hardwood floors. And I think about all the older spaces in the Bell Red. Are we doing anything to preserve some of these older buildings and convert them? Because they have so much personality and character.
There's a, there's a phrase in the arts, new ideas need old buildings. And it continues to be as true now as it was 20 years ago when I first heard it. There is a lot of partnership currently with a lot of our developers. They are in conversation with us. We don't have a lot of carrots for some of the preservation. So there, those conversations kind of stay at the conversation level and goodwill and general desire to see the Arts District develop from our developers.
Is that something that council can have a role in, in creating incentives to preserve retail or spaces like that for?
As we go through the look forward and the compliance, there may be opportunities within specific boundaries to incentivize. I would also add that one of the key things we're hoping that the Arts District Association will be able to do in the future is help advocate with the developers or property owners or perhaps even fundraise themselves at some point to help preserve some of the spaces that are in Bell Red. There's definitely a multi-partner partnership.
I'd be interested in hearing what the, what the different mechanisms might be for encouraging that.
And then to your question on microhousing, we didn't specifically look at it in the art market study because we started that prior to the change. But we do have an upcoming FIT study. So as we look specifically around the Kelly Parcel, there'll probably be a FIT study there where we could also look a little bit further into microhousing, spacing off of this report where we did see quite a bit of desire for smaller units, which is not the national standard. The national standard in art housing is for two and three-bedroom units because it's artists and their families. Because of the dynamics of our community, smaller families, maybe younger folks took the survey, we saw a desire for smaller units. So I think that that would point towards some micro housing research too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great discussion, great presentation. We are going to take a break and we'll come back at 10:00. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order and we have, we have a new city manager, deputy city manager. Okay. Okay, so are we ready?
Yeah, we are ready.
Okay.
Tee this one up.
So here's our last study session item, Mr. Miyake.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This last study session item is on a proposed ordinance to increase the threshold for administrative approval. And just by way of background, this particular subject was raised at your June 22, or June 2022 council retreat where council requested additional information on raising the limit. So tonight, staff is going to present the council with some background as well as a recommendation to increase the administrative approval thresholds, which we believe will result in a more efficient execution of city business. So tonight, along with that, we are seeking direction to prepare an ordinance if the council so desires to modify the city code at a future meeting. So joining us this evening is Ira McDaniel, Assistant Director of our Financial Services and Property Management Department. And he is going to kick us presentation off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miyake, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we're here to discuss Bellevue City Code Chapters 4.28, which relates to our procurement practices and Chapters 4.30 and 4.32, which relate to our real property practices. At the end, we will be seeking your direction to prepare an ordinance to modify these code chapters to increase the threshold for administrative approval. Before we jump in on the threshold topic, I wanted to cover the fact that we're going to be bringing several different code amendments over the next few months. And I wanted to lay out a little bit of the roadmap, if you will. Tonight, we'll be discussing thresholds for procurement and real property. On the 27th, in two weeks, we'll be back to discuss our partnership program, which has been discussed by council over the past year. And we'll be coming back with programmatic elements to discuss, to implement that program. In April, we'll be bringing a composting ordinance. This is a requirement of new state law that relates to the procurement of composted materials for public works projects. And so we'll be bringing that in April. And in May, we'll be discussing our procurement diversity inclusion plan, which centers on our outreach and inclusion efforts for women and minority-owned businesses. So getting back into the threshold increase conversation, our current threshold is set at $90,000 for procurement and real property-related items. Each contract that we bring to council requires a level of involvement and review from city staff. You have a staff member who has to draft the memorandum. It gets reviewed by their manager, their director, other city staff, the city attorney's office, the city clerk's office and the budget office before coming to council for your review. So there's quite a bit of involvement in even a relatively straightforward item that comes to council. And then if you multiply that by the 150 odd contracts that come to council on an annual basis, it can be a pretty substantial investment of time. In addition to the amount of time and the labor hours involved, there's also a delay that's introduced in each project because the, the amount of time that it takes while it's going through the process. The contractor has been selected. It's waiting for council approval. It takes several weeks to get through that process. So before they can actually get started on their work, it goes through this delay process. As the city continues to grow larger, become more complex, transforming from a smaller bedroom community into more of an urban center. And as the price of goods, services and construction increases, that means that more and more contracts are coming through council and you can create a pretty large administrative strain. So we're looking to, how do we resolve that strain? At the same time, council's involvement and review provides critical oversight to the work of the city. And the transparency of having that on our agenda memos and on your calendar is, it makes it transparent and available to the public to be able to see what's going on with the city. So with all of those factors, we have this balance between the operational efficiency of being able to get through administratively, approve our work and get out there and get started on our projects, balanced with this concept of the oversight and the transparency. So we want to maintain that balance as we go through our analysis of this. So we took a look at a number of factors and we're making a recommendation tonight that we increase that threshold for both real property and procurement from $90,000 to $350,000. So the primary factors that we considered in making that recommendation are state law, the volume of contracts that we have coming through and the thresholds of other agencies. If you look at state law, there's no state law that provides guidance for a specific limit for what should go to council for approval. The state law leaves that up to the municipalities, to the policymakers, to make a decision about how to make that balance between efficiency and oversight. But there is in state law a code that's related to small public works. This is a threshold around where you can go through a modified selection process for contractors on public works. That's at $350,000. And it made sense to align there with the state when they're, you know, they have this threshold that is related to what is a smaller work, what is more simple and straightforward and deserving of that abbreviated process, if you will. Looking second to contract volume, the slide here shows the impact of moving from $90,000 threshold to $350,000 threshold on our procurement contracts. And what you can see from this is that while 55% of our contracts that are coming through council now are in that range of 90,000 to 350,000, that's only 10% of the contract value of those. So as we're looking at that balance, we can, if we move the threshold to 350,000, it would eliminate more than half of the contracts that are coming through for council review at this point. But it would be a pretty small percentage of the city's overall spend, which is in the order of $150 million a year. So that $350,000 in the order of magnitude, when you're comparing to 150 million per year, is still relatively small. And then the third piece that we looked at is the procurement thresholds for other agencies. You can see Bellevue's at 90,000 currently. Tacoma is at 500,000. Seattle and King County have no threshold. They have delegated 100% of authority to execute contracts to their staff. The Port of Seattle recently raised their threshold from 300,000 to $2 million. That will become effective in April. The Bellevue School District has a $300,000 threshold for public works, but no threshold for all other purchases, provided the purchases within their approved budget. And then Sound Transit has a $5 million threshold for construction and architectural and engineering services and $2 million for all of the purchases. So you can see there's a pretty broad spread among these agencies. And our proposed threshold of 350,000 sits pretty conservatively within this range. In order to enact that change from 90,000 to 350,000, we have several supporting code revisions. In some cases, it's just modifying 90,000 and replacing it with 350,000. All of these changes are detailed in the agenda material, so I won't go through them in detail. But we're also clarifying administrative authority, creating the authority to award bids or reject bids for, at the administrative level, below $350,000. We're fixing some outdated and incorrect references in the code. And we are looking to consolidate a threshold for real property small purchases. There's currently a small purchases provision in the code that's at 25,000 for projects that are not included in our CIP project. And I haven't seen that code used in the last six years at all. And in terms of $25,000 on a real property transaction, it does not get you very far. So we're proposing consolidating that and we would have one threshold for real property transactions at the $350,000 level. We're also looking at adjusting our settlement thresholds for low-dollar real property transactions. Our current code states that if you're negotiating with a property owner and you go above 10% over the appraised fair market value, it would require council approval. On really small dollar transactions, that can get rather difficult to negotiate with somebody. If you're offering, for example, $500 and they say, I want $600, well, if it goes over 550, we're going to, it'll have to go to council. So we wanted to broaden that up and give a little bit of additional flexibility in our negotiations with property owners there. Coming back to the benefits of this change, this is really about faster, more efficient delivery of our projects, ensuring that we're getting out there and getting work done more quickly. I want to point to the commitments to competition fairness and strong internal controls. That's something that our procurement team takes very seriously. I'm pleased to work with them on a daily basis and see the work that they do in communicating our policies, our codes to the staff and other departments as they're assisting them with their procurement activities and they serve as a vital resource and ensuring that people are following process. That commitment to competition is something that this does not alter or change. We have several thresholds in our administrative policy around when things are required to go up to competition. What we're talking about today is just the thresholds for when it's required to bring those agreements to council for approval. And then finally, one thing that I'm sure is on council's mind is that transparency piece of having the contracts available to the public on the council calendar and in the agenda. And in order to replace that, we are, we would be bringing contracts between 92K and 350K into reporting that we could post on the city's public-facing website so that that information would remain available to the public. That ends the staff report. So Mayor, I'll hand it over to you for a discussion and I'll be available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to ask a quick question and maybe it was on the last slide. Is there a cost savings benefit to this change for the city?
It's not on here. The cost savings is, would be spread across the city. I, we, it's a little challenging because the number of people who are involved in each review to really look at the number of hours. I would estimate that we're probably looking somewhere between 500 and 1,000 hours of staff time that would be saved. And it's really less about the cost savings and more that we'd be able to reallocate that time to other uses.
Okay, great. Deputy Mayor, let's start with you.
Okay. Not with a motion, but my comments.
With your comments.
Okay, great. Just wanted to be sure.
Well, you can start with a motion.
Oh, okay.
Let's do it.
I'm all for that.
I'm going to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to increase the threshold for administrative approval by amending Bellevue City Code Chapters 4.2A, 4.30 and 4.32 for final action at a future meeting.
Okay, now you make your comments.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of this? It's pretty straightforward. Certainly, we all, you know, trust staff and want to give you the ability to move quicker and more efficiently. So my only ask is that we do some significant push to make residents aware of this change. So we do a press release. We make sure that it is highlighted clearly on the homepage of the city website, where to go if residents want to review contracts and they understand where it lives and how to access it. So they can review at their leisure. But other than that, very much in favor of moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berksdale.
No questions. I support moving it forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stokes. Okay, Councilmember Zion.
Yeah, I want to thank the staff for bringing this to our attention because, you know, when we think about all of the priorities that the council has and just the number of these that show up as consent, that I can't remember the last time we pulled one of these that are at this threshold. So to me, those 1,000 hours and the ability to repurpose it for much higher value while still being able to have the safeguards and the transparency is going to help us. You know, we have a $2.2 billion buy-in in your budget. So to me, all of these pieces, I absolutely agree with. I think if I would have looked at this, I might have suggested that we even look at a higher threshold. But, you know, depending on what we're. But, you know, depending on where my colleagues are, I'm 350. I think it's a really good start. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thanks. I completely agree with you, your rationale for being efficient, save time, and, you know, without going through a lot of detail on smaller amounts versus bigger amounts. I agree. The one thing I also appreciate you brought up, which I also feel is important, is oversight and transparency. Sometimes it's not just a dollar amount that's important, but the first onset of the work, you know, a project, you know, and we want to be sure that we are aware of it. It's the significance of it, you know. A $90,000 project can turn into a $100 million project, you know. It's the first step. I always say that the devil is in the detail as well. So I appreciate you trying to make it transparent and oversight. And your suggestion of in doing it as a, what you call, public website. I agree with Deputy Mayor. I think you should make it easy for people to get to it if they need to, if they want to. And for myself especially, I look at a lot of issues, you know. It doesn't necessarily mean it's all just going to determine by the dollar amount. Dollar amount's important, but it's the significance of it, significance. So I like to make sure it's easy, that if I can get to it, hopefully other members of the community can also get to it. So as long as we can do that, I'm happy with supporting this. But be sure it is transparent, you know, to have oversight ultimately. If I hope I notice it, I hope other council members will notice as well, and we have the ability to have oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Barksdale, would you like to make an amendment to the motion? Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, I was going to just ask, and I should have said this when it was my turn to talk, whether we could amend the motion to have it come back on consent. So if people agree with that, they would second it.
There's an amendment to have the motion be, come back on consent, have it.
Second.
Any discussion or problem with that? Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that's the amended motion. All right. So good. Thank you very much. I do. Okay. All those in favor of the, of the full motion that's been amended?
Aye.
Sorry, got lost in the Roberts rules. Okay, I think we're done here. So just remind everybody that, again, we're not going to have a meeting next week, but we will be back on the 27th. So we'll see you then. Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day.